To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is 7:04 on Monday, November 27th, and we have all councilors present and accounted for. Good evening, councilors. For announcements and presentations, I'm going to ask Mr. Malesko if he would present during this time a brief overview for our Rockwell project, which is further down on our agenda requiring action. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I need to hit the "on" button. Just waiting for the screen to be pulled up. I would start off with the current plan. Again, it's so it's not going to give you the renderings, just going to give you where the current basketball court is and current condition of it. It would be, you can see my sheet here, it would be this one. While she's pulling that up, I would like to recognize the members of the planning committee that I've been working with. First of all, my name is David Malesko. I'm the Director of Parks Recreation and Leisure Services. I've had the pleasure of working with our planning team chaired by Lynette Easman, followed by Gail Nolan, Kim Dunbar, Renee James, and James Jenkins. This committee was formed, was was put together in late 2021, early 2022. And our charge was to look at the current plan of the current site at Rockwell Park, as you can see up on the screen right now. With the existing plan has two 60-foot baseball diamonds, one 90-foot baseball diamond, two full-court basketball courts, approximately 60 parking spaces. This is all on the south side of Rockwell Avenue, which the physical address of that is 91 Rockwell Avenue. On the on the northern portion of it, which would be the physical address is 46 Roxwell Avenue. Currently have four pickleball courts, park and green space. So this is what we would consider to be premier park in town. It brings people in from around the communities and from not just Bloomfield, but from surrounding neighborhoods as well. We are in current need of the basketball courts being replaced. Basketball courts have been resurfaced several times to this point. So we are looking there. We have made some major improvements onto this park. We put in basketball court lights that opened up in 2020. The pickleball courts were installed in 2019. Prior to that, there were four tennis courts at that location. As part of a reduction of tennis courts in town, we removed the tennis courts from this location. There has been a major decrease in baseball play here in town in Bloomfield. The Bloomfield Little League program actually merged with the Windsor Little League program several years ago. As a result of that, the majority of the games and practices are held in the Windsor location. We're happy to say that there is still an opportunity for kids to play baseball in the town of Bloomfield. They're just being then being regionalized, which is a trend that you see through many sports in the state of Connecticut to youth sports level. So if you could switch over to the next slide. As part of the plan, we did, we did almost, almost 20, excuse me, almost 12 months of background. We hired the consultant Weston and Sampson to come in and to do a review of the area for us. This is their landscape architects, engineers, and engineering firm. And through community feedback that we've had, we knew that there was an additional increase for additional basketball courts. We didn't need any more pickleball courts. We have the four pickleball courts here and five pickleball courts at Park School Complex, which is at 330 Park Avenue. We do need additional parking. So if you look on the north side of this plan, you see additional 57 parking spaces. We still have some green space with water retention on the north side of the park. We're calling that part of Phase One. If you come look on the south side of Rockwell Avenue, you'll see future development, where it says future in the block, that includes the sports fields themselves, we're calling that Phase Two. So that would entail one 90-foot baseball diamond, one 60-foot baseball diamond, and multi-use fields. This way, we would be able to get, find additional space for our youth football program and youth soccer programs. Because during the fall, when the two programs are going together, they are competing over the same acreage and same ball fields. So having this extra space would be well advised and recommended by the department. In addition to that, we have community gardens at this location. We currently have two community gardens, one at Los Solet Park, one at Lees Lane Park. Between the two, we have 35 plots. They are booked solid every year, so we know that there is additional need for community garden space here in town. So we have it on the south side of the park at 91 Rockwell Ave. Additionally, we have a area for a playscape and for exercise area. We have an octagon pavilion space. We have additional pavilion space. So we have two areas for pavilion use. Pavilion use is a major need in the town of Bloomfield. As of right now, we only have one area with pavilion, and that's at our pool, municipal pool complex, which is only open 10 weeks out of the year. We do have another one that's coming in over here as part of the Philly Park project. But this is really a destination park. We would be able to multiple of projects at this area. So the reason why I'm here this evening is we've been asked, put together for the fourth round of the State of Connecticut Community Investment Fund package, put together a, an application for this. There's an application that is due on December 15th, which is a few short, few short weeks away. So breaking this up into the two phases, like I said, Phase One, which consists of the basket, the four basketball courts, the, all of the parking area, the pavilions, the play areas, the water retention, the community gardens, this sum total is approximately $7,600,000. So I was a little skeptical of this number initially. I thought it was a large number, but doing some research through what has been awarded through the CIF funding, actually think that it's a reasonable ask. When you go through and you look, the town of Windsor just received $4 million for one of their parks. The city of, I believe it was New Haven, received, City of New Haven received $12 million for a park. City of New London received $7.2 million for a park. A Burris Magnus reserved, received $3 million for a park. So I believe that we would be in strong consideration for this if the council were to permit us to move forward with this. So I thought it would be in the best interest, and as would the committee, to stay with that number of the $7.6 million. This is more than just a neighborhood park at this point in time. This would be a true destination point, a destination park for the community and for our neighboring communities alike. I believe it would help revitalize some of the Blue Hills Avenue businesses that we have there. It would bring in, allow us to have events here, basketball tournaments, pickleball tournaments for future development on the athletic field space, would allow us to have host tournaments. If the Bloomfield Raiders could host a Jamboree at this location, you're bringing in hundreds of people to the location. We, so in, it's sized accordingly. But more than just the athletics, there's also a walking path that goes around it. We increased the vegetation, the landscaping that goes here. And we've included, as I mentioned earlier, the community garden space. So this is a, a park that we believe will bring in not just one specific area, but all residents alike into, into the town of Bloomfield and into this area. So to finalize the presentation this evening, for tonight's ask for the $7.6 million, I'm asking for four post-tension concrete basketball courts, which includes athletic lighting for those courts as well as the existing basketball courts, two new parking areas totaling 115 spaces, destination pathways, fencing, walking pathways, walkway through, safety lighting throughout the park itself, gathering space with it for two pavilions, fully functional restroom area, two community gardens, raised crosswalk across Rockwell Avenue, which will also help with traffic control in, for speed mitigation on Rockwell Avenue, exercise stations, play area, and future phases include the revitalization to the multipurpose athletic fields. I did also fail to mention, working with CROG right now on the East Coast Greenway, we have it slated, we have this as being a connection coming from 330 Park Avenue over to Rockwell Avenue. So it would come down the old trolley tracks, which is just north of the basketball courts that you see there, and the pathway would bring you in between, in between the basketball courts and across the street and bring you into the south part of this. So I believe it's, it's a major destination park. So people would also, so if we were to put the Greenway here, it also allows people to park here and to go see other areas in town using something other than mechanical access. It would be, you know, creating a health and wellness through bike, bikes and walk community. I believe that's it for now. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malesko, for that presentation, and thank you for all your diligence and hard work to get us to this point. It's been several years, so I want to thank your leadership and your diligence on this. I also want to recognize the Chair of the Rockwell Building Committee, Planning Committee, Lynette Easman, who was also our Chair of the Board of Education. So thank you for your leadership and getting us to this, this moment here to help, you know, revitalize a significant area of the town that overall has been neglected over the last several decades. And so this is a step in the, in the right direction, and I'm so excited to see the presentation. Our state delegation, you know, came to us, you know, within the last few weeks and said, "Go big, think big, bigger submissions," and this project simulates that, among other things that we have in the pipeline. So this is exactly what I believe, you know, they want to see from Bloomfield for the hundreds of million dollars they have set aside at the state level to apply to towns and cities around the state that fit the criteria for these funds. So thank you again. Any questions for Mr. Malesko? Councilor Merritt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think this is great, and I'm especially excited about the library-to-library bike paths, which we hope to put in. But I would, I wonder if we might think about, you know, Old St. Andrews Church gives free bicycles away, and I wonder if we could put a bike station in there so people could do the same thing from that end, and they could bike anywhere from town. So this would be a great asset, because the kids will be able to come biking from the other schools or 330 Park or anywhere to come to this, this recreation spot. So that's one point I wanted to make. Another one is, I have a long history with the Belk Building, and I'm very disappointed that we don't own that anymore. And I understand it may be still available, and I wish you would look into that, because it would, it kind of bifurcates our, our land there. And I know you can't use it for this option, but it would be a great thing to have, an asset to have in the future, was our, used to be a community center. And it's a shame to lose that, because a community center would be very handy in that area. Okay, and another, another point, that's a very wet spot. And I notice you've also, you have a, a sump, I guess you'd call it, a puddle over here. Is that, you're allowed for that.
So it's what?
You're aware of its wetness.
It's water retention. So that would be required for this here as well. And if you could actually see on the northern portion of, the southern portion of it, below 91 Rockwell Avenue where the, the athletic fields are, we're not concerned with the water in that area there. Where the, the concern potentially is for water right now is where the green space is and going into the parking areas, but that's been identified through the engineering. So they're not technically wetlands at this point in time, but the wetland agents did identify it as potentially wetlands creep.
Okay, but I wish somebody would at least ask about that building, which we gave away. And now it's been fixed up. We had an irate town manager at the time that wanted to destroy the building, but says he gave it away. And I won't get into that anymore, but I just think we should undo that. And it was an asset for the town, and a shame that we had to lose it.
It's a nice piece of property.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Malesko? Wonderful. We will address the action part of this later in the agenda. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Moving into, do you have a question for Mr. Malesko?
Not for Mr. Malesko, but I'm hoping to add an item to the agenda.
We are going to move into citizen statements and petitions first.
Then after that?
Yeah, sure.
Perfect.
Any citizen statements and petitions part of the agenda, please raise your virtual hand if you are online. If you are in the room, please sign up with our Clerk of Counsel. You will have three minutes to address the counsel. Please state your name and your address.
Kevin Goff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Kevin Goff, 5 Bear Ridge Drive. I came tonight to speak positively on all three items on the agenda. I'll start with Rockwell, and Councilor Merritt already expressed some of the same things I wanted to say. Besides the overall plan, community gardens, and the improvement of the courts and all that, this is a highly important spot for connectivity with East Coast Greenway going through there. I am concerned about the building. The building, obviously, having that building, having the old Blue Hills School available to combine with the library and have that as part of the whole complex, that's extremely important, and I hope we can do something about that. There's also Land Trust property to the north of the pickleball courts, so there's an opportunity for some walking trails on the other side. But I think it's, I think it's a great thing. The one thing I would like to see before anything is, is submitted to the Community Investment Fund with those plans is I would like to see the synthetic turf references removed from the plans. These things have a way of getting, even though that's Phase Two and not in Phase One, the fact that there are documents out there with that has a tendency to make them legitimate. And there's been, as my understanding is, the committee is, is not in favor of synthetic turf there. I also want to speak on the two other items. I think it's great that the council is going to provide budget guidance going into the budget, rather than waiting for what pops out and trying to deal with it. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And I'm also very happy with the updates to the council rules and procedures. A lot of these things are things that have been talked about for a long time. I'm glad they're finally happening. I especially, if you've heard me speak when I was on council, I'm especially happy that we are going to have a requirement that things cannot be voted on the same night as public hearings. The idea of a public hearing is for the council to hear things and then make a decision after reflection. It should not happen the same night. I know the reality of the situation is, a lot of times, two people will show up for a public hearing, there's not a lot to mull over, but I still think it's good government practice, and when there is a controversial item, it should not be voted on at the same time. So these are major improvements. I look forward to having one council meeting a month. I think that would be great. And thank you for all you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to butcher your name. How do you pronounce it?
Carol.
Yes?
Carol.
DuKoKinsky. DuKoKinsky is next.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to talk. My name is Carol DuKoKinsky. I'll say it slow, four syllables, silent L, DuKoKinsky. It's much easier if I do it like that for everybody, but I'd love for you to just call me Carol. I'm a new resident of Bloomfield. I moved here on June 10th, 2022, and I was so excited, because I bought my first house by myself. Now, one thing I did want to do tonight is two things. One, I want to learn. I came here first and foremost to learn about Bloomfield and about everyone here and the projects and what's going on. And the second reason is I want to be a voice for Maple Avenue. I live at 3 Maple Avenue. And I noticed that it's a community that's trying to come together again. Maybe it used to be together, maybe it's no longer together, but we all have this group text, and we're starting to become something. It's the beginning, it's the infancy. I don't know what it is, but I want it to be more. And we started talking about what we like, what we don't like, of course, naturally, right? And there's two things that bother us, and it's a part of the traffic calming survey that came out, I want to say December of last year. There was a really neat proposal for traffic calming on Maple Avenue that might eliminate that loud noise and that, those fast drivers, real fast drivers. And a lot of us cross our street to get our mail. So we think of the elderly, we think of ourselves, we think of children crossing the street, trick-or-treating, the Halloween just happened, and we went trick-or-treating with my stepdaughter. So it was, it was kind of a little nerve-wracking to wonder about that. So that's one concern that we have, if, if there's availability for consideration. And then the other one is, a little more different, it's coyotes. I didn't know there were coyotes in Bloomfield until I got here, because I came from an area in northwest Connecticut, in Torrington, where it's kind of common for us. We're like, okay, but here, I didn't, I never expected I'd go outside and wonder if I'm going to see a coyote at like 5:30. So I, I don't really know what to do about them. I read some things online, and so did the other people. But if there's consideration for how to handle them or some kind of public announcement release that can help us better ourselves and our lives, that would be incredible. And that's everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Esther Roberts.
I'm Esther Roberts. I live at 33 Gap Road, with my husband and our son. And what we, speaking to the traffic calming on Gap Road, now we have the construction going on, so there's a lot of diversion, and that's okay. But they just put a new street in, got rid of the potholes, which was great, except now nobody slows down. In the past, people have lost tires and did slow down. Now it's a racetrack. I was doing leafs the other day, literally, I had to like jump back into my yard. People are going down there 40, 50, and 60 miles an hour. So we're just wondering if there's any way to maybe consider speed bumps. I think a couple of years ago or so, we tried to maybe find out if there could be a one-way. That kind of went nowhere. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there, because it's, it's getting to be really, really bad. So I wonder if speed bumps or something of that nature could perhaps be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine Jude. I'm also from Maple Avenue, so good to see you. They're my new neighbors. I'm here to also talk about the wildlife. The only trick-or-treater I had this year was bear that ate all of the pumpkins from my front porch. So that was the only one I had. It ate six pumpkins. In all seriousness, there's, a dog on Brown Street was killed by coyotes. They're in my backyard nightly. My, I, I have three dogs, and it, I can't even let them out anymore. I've been in Bloomfield for 22 years, and it's never been this bad. We've always had bobcats, we've always had all kinds of animals, but they've not gotten to the point where they are now, and it's dangerous. It's dangerous for little kids, it's dangerous for all of our dogs. It's causing a lot of friction in the house. We're all panicking every time a door opens. That, when, you know, I have a little Jack Russell, if he gets out, he's pretty much toast. He's 17 now, he'll never get out of the way. So there's got to be a happy medium. I hear both sides of this argument, I understand both sides of it, but I'm wondering if we can't work to resolve it together, because we need to have our pets as well and provide a safe community for us all to live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the round.
Last call for citizen statements. Oh, we have a virtual hand raised.
James Bifford.
Yes, Dr. James Bifford, 17 Terry Plains Road. Good evening. There are a number of proposals for your rules of procedure that I and all taxpayers should find concerning. First, as I admonished all of you at your previous meeting, now that you have the job, we expect you to do the job, and one of your first initiatives is to decrease your meetings to one per month during a time when there are so many unaddressed needs and ongoing projects. Since you all claim to be interested in openness and transparency, it just seems like you're trying to hide from the public and continue your backroom deals. Second, consolidating your eight or nine subcommittees into just four virtually guarantees that there will not be proper oversight of town business. Unlike most neighbors, I have attended almost all of your subcommittee meetings. With rare exceptions, these meetings are unfocused, poorly planned, and accomplish very little, and that is with a very narrow focus for the subcommittees. By combining many different topics, I fear that oversight will be rushed and diluted among the many different tasks, so that even less will be accomplished. On another topic, I scoured the charter, town ordinances, and your rules of procedure, and nowhere is there a procuratorship exception for hiring a town attorney. Since the retainer is over a quarter million dollars, it is way past the threshold of a 10th of 1% of the town budget, so I believe it should be competitively bid. So we taxpayers are assured we are getting the best possible service for our investment. Just because councils have always done it this way does not make it right or legal. And speaking of the town attorney position, I need to remind you of conflict of interest law, which states that in all dealings involving town funds, there cannot be even the appearance of a conflict of interest, and certainly no real conflict of interest, in any purchasing, contracting, or general business decisions. I have researched your proposed town attorney, and Attorney Crumb is well-respected and certainly capable. Unfortunately, he also hosted a fundraiser for Councilor Wong's campaign, not for the entire Democratic council slate. Every honest citizen of Bloomfield must wonder, why would a Hartford law firm be interested in the campaign of one Bloomfield council candidate? Naturally, I'm not accusing anyone of any wrongdoing, but it certainly appears to the layman to fly in the face of conflict of interest law. I am calling for an independent investigation into this hiring, not by the town manager, not by our local ethics commission, which is appointed by the council and therefore beholden to them, but by Connecticut State Ethics Commission and possibly the Police Department. Finally, I have to wonder what happened to most of you. The whole town knows several of you are controlled by your major campaign donors, but most of you used to be honest people with character and integrity, yet you just go along to get along, which serves no one. At your first meeting, only Councilor Mahan tried to ask pertinent questions, but you all just let him be shut down. You all should know that failing to challenge decisions makes you complicit in any subsequent wrongdoing arising from those decisions. Please reflect on who you plan to serve, party bosses and campaign donors or the people of Bloomfield. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Great. If you could grab the ladies on Maple Ave and Gap Road, their email, and then we'll forward them the traffic calming policy and any resources from the deep or any other handy resources that let them know how to handle wildlife, that would be helpful. Thank you. So I am going to recognize their deputy mayor at this point, as he has alluded, grouped up, and he would like to add an item to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to add the following agenda item. Consider and take possible action regarding housing rehabilitation program and CIF application.
Second.
Second.
Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilor McClary and Councilor Mahan. Any questions or concerns with adding this item to the agenda? Let me just fix this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We will be moving this item to the last part of the new business section. I believe Councilor Mahan also has an item he'd like to add.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to add a discussion to follow up on the questions that I had in our previous meeting regarding the appointment of the town attorney.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Moved by Councilor Mahan, seconded by Councilor Merritt. Any discussion? Moved by Counselor Mahan, seconded by Counselor Merritt, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're gonna call a roll call. I didn't catch that. Counselor McClary.
No.
Counselor Lloyd.
No.
Counselor Oliver, excuse me.
Nay.
Counselor Cooper.
No.
Counselor Waterhouse. Counselor Merritt. Counselor Mahan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
No.
The mayor votes no, the motion does not pass. Moving on to the business portion of our agenda. Just grab my papers here. Council business, old business, item fifteen dash sixteen dash eighty-four, discussion and possible action regarding policy one hundred and ten point fifteen, the town council rules and procedures. I'm gonna recognize the deputy mayor.
So I move to amend policy one ten point oh five. Town Council of Bloomfield rules of procedures as outlined.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Cooper. Before we get into discussion, I just think it's healthy to highlight some of the major changes for the enclosed procedures and rules. This is something very common that councils do led by the chairs of the council, which in this case is the mayor, at the beginning of each term. Uh, major things to point out with this particular policy update is moving to one meeting a month, staying on the second Monday of the month. Of course, there will be uh, special meetings that arise that need to be placed and scheduled as we have leveraged that tool throughout this last year and term. Uh, the next item is consolidation of subcommittees, uh, which includes sunsetting the committees on committees and transitioning the golf committee to be a public board, and that will be addressed in the future. Adding a consent agenda, this is basically to approve routine items uh, by consensus. Uh, the Board of Education has had a consent agenda, for example, for several decades. And of note, a very popular item, uh, to minimize council comments to a two-minute limit. And so those are the major items I just wanted to lay out um, in this uh, in this particular policy amendment. For any further discussion? Counselor Mahan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I simply, uh, I'm sure this is no surprise, but I won't be supporting this measure this evening. If we are to change the rules of procedure, they should be to improve efficiency, our ability to govern, or allow us to be more responsible to our residents. This does none of those things. Especially with all the items that we have to discuss, the uh, major issues that we have to tackle uh, over this next term, including hiring a new town manager, uh, figuring out what our budget is going to be for next year, the library project that has unstable funding, affordable housing, et cetera. There's so many issues that we have to discuss, the last thing we should be doing is reducing our meetings from two to one a month. That's simply irresponsible, we were voted in to do a job. Voted in to represent our constituents, our neighbors. And I feel like this measure is a complete disservice to all those folks that are out there expecting us to represent their very interests. In addition, I feel like this, in, in another way, it aims to solve a problem that does not exist. Like, I mentioned a series of issues that we could and should be discussing today, but instead we're discussing a reshuffling of our subcommittees and reducing meetings. You know, that is essentially just solving a problem that does not exist. I haven't heard any issues with our, with the status quo of how our, our meetings work, how our subcommittees work. All of a sudden, we're looking to, you know, bring, uh, not only are our meetings down from two to one a month, but also to bring extra responsibilities into our various subcommittees, uh, including the renaming. It's a complete disservice to our town, consolidating more items into one committee. Uh, it will only decrease the efficiency of our governing body. So I just, I can't in good conscience support this item because it's not going to do anything but cause harm to our community.
Counselor Merritt.
I, I beg to disagree. I, I think we have too many meetings. And the number of meetings does not determine how much you get done. Most of the things have to be done not in meetings. And the things that require meetings should be taken care of in subcommittees. Most towns around here have only one meeting a month. And we have no reason for being different, thank you. So I, I think we have a, a tendency to do a lot of talking about things. And we could be spending your time privately or in subcommittees studying them rather than talking about them in meetings. Uh, I, I, first thing I do when I get on our board of directors is try to reduce the number of meetings. Uh, it first of all requires staff to spend a lot more time preparing for things. And they could be spending their time actually working on projects. So I, I, I think it's, these are all good ideas. I think the less we talk, the better, thank you.
Counselor McClary.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, uh, with my colleague, uh, Counselor Merritt. This indeed does streamline and make us efficient um, by including a consent calendar, so routine matters like tax appeals, a number of different items, appointments, that does help us streamline our process and makes us a little bit more efficient. Um, secondly, uh, as it relates to the one meeting a month, uh, any community, if you do your research, and I want the general public to know, if you do your research, um, you will see towns with the same population and same budget size and makeup of Bloomfield only have one meeting a month. Uh, you have major cities, um, in addition to the communities that are makeup like Bloomfield, you have major cities that have one meeting a month. Uh, we have absolutely too many meetings, um, with routine items that uh, don't really need to be on the second meeting. Most of the time at the second meeting of the month, we are saying, oh, our committee hasn't met, we're gonna meet next, next month or next week. And then all of the action items is for the first meeting of the month. Um, furthermore, uh, I think the consolidation of committees uh, is smart because if you look at the committee charters, a number of the committee charters have multiple or duplicate service, so an example, admin and education had economic development. We had a land use and economic development committee that dealt with economic development. And so looking at the committee charters that have not been updated in quite some time and streamlining them and making, um, I, I did, making recommendations to streamline the process and update those charters is not doing our residents a disservice. Um, it's disingenuous for members um, of the body to say that. Um, in addition, um, as it relates to, um, one meeting a month, as Counselor Merritt said, not to repeat them, but just because you have multiple meetings does not mean that you're getting things done. And so I fully support, uh, this, adding the consent calendar, consolidated, uh, committee um, meetings and committees and move into one meeting a month. And then additionally, add in council decorum and, uh, two-minute, I didn't necessarily want the two-minute, I wanted three minutes, but, uh, you know, you compromise and you have conversations with your colleagues. Um, and you compromise to do what's best in the interest for the body and the residents of Bloomfield. And so I fully look forward to supporting this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, I, I want to start out first by saying that I, I fully support the revision of the, uh, meeting times and the, uh, subcommittees. Um, I, I believe, you know, in the vernacular, we can chew bubble gum and walk at the same time. Uh, it doesn't, uh, seem, uh, very hard to do that, and I believe it will also alleviate some of the town staff. Uh, knowing that they will be, uh, have the ability to get into cadence with one meeting a month. Instead of taking time to prepare, um, every couple of weeks, um, to get, uh, uh, town business done. And so I think that, you know, in, at the, the end state, when, when we are, um, uh, Counselor Mahan, I think that you will also, uh, become to be in favor of moving this. Um, uh, you know, I want to say lastly, uh, one of the best reasons I think is, is we're volunteers. And this gives a lot of time back to folks, um, to spend their lives, uh, with their loved ones. And so, uh, I thank you so much for, for letting me speak.
Thank you, any more discussion? Counselor Waterhouse. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say I agree with all of my counselors and I support this decision. Especially since we also have the space for a special meeting. If something does need to be talked about and discussed, we can hold a special meeting as well. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm going ahead and call, I'm calling the question at this point, and I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call. Counselor Waterhouse.
Yay.
Counselor Merritt.
Yay.
Counselor Mahan.
Nay.
Counselor Oliver.
Yea.
Counselor Cooper.
Yes.
Counselor Lloyd.
Yes.
Counselor McClary.
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Harrington.
Yes.
The mayor votes aye, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Moving right into the next item. In new business, uh, item twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, consider and take action regarding the adoption of resolution, community investment fund project application, the Rockwell Park revitalization plan. I'm gonna recognize Counselor Oliver.
I would like to move the adoption of the resolution, community investment fund project application for Rockwell Park Revitalization Plan.
Second. Seconded by, moved by Counselor Oliver, seconded by the deputy mayor and Counselor Waterhouse. Moving into discussion. Any discussion? Counselor McClary.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, my comments are gonna be very short. I, I think this proposal is great. Uh, research shows that when you invest in community parks and maintain them well, that neighboring home values adjacent to parks and recreation space, uh, increased twenty percent. Um, we know during COVID that outdoor recreation became a lifeline, um, in a very uh, dark period in this country's history. And so the more offerings that we can have for our residents will be great. Love the connectivity and I look forward to supporting this and hopefully, uh, we can get support at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mahan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first, I want to thank, uh, Dave Malesko, uh, as well as, um, our chair, Lynette Easmond, for, um, you know, the work that they've done, um, on this project. I spent quite a bit of time at Bill Lee Fields as a kid. I was, I played Little League baseball, my sister played T-ball. So, um, you know, this Rockwell Park area is, uh, places very near and dear, uh, to my heart. Um, so I, I'm looking forward to seeing this CIF, uh, project application, uh, move forward and the subsequent project that'll follow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I don't, I think that those who know me know I am extremely excited about the Rockwell project. Uh, this is something that started years ago, uh, in my first term as council. We, the council at the time, set aside some planning grant money, or excuse me, planning money for this particular item with the support of, I'm looking at him now, council, uh, former counselor Kevin Goff and Counselor Merritt, who supported those efforts. And it's just, it's so it's been what, five years? And so that's how long government takes, five years, five, five years of working very hard. Uh, you know, outside, in and inside of meetings, uh, talking with your state delegation, making sure they know how important this is and making sure the community knows how much of an impact building this particular destination neighborhood park is gonna be. And so I am truly, truly jumping up and down. Um, so, uh, we will just keep your fingers crossed, we'll kick it up to the state and hope they find it as, uh, valuable as we do here on the ground. And so with that, I will go ahead and call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed, any abstentions? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes, thank you so much. Moving into item twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, discussion and, uh, possible action regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget guidelines, I will recognize Counselor McClary.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would like to move, uh, the recommendation for the town council to establish budget guidelines for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four to include a half a percent increase for the Board of Education. Uh, the usage of a one million dollars from our fund balance, the general fund appropriations, the allocation of five hundred thousand dollars for the capital improvement. Uh, about a four and a half percent increase, a decrease, excuse me, uh, in town operation. Uh, and the continuation of the moratorium on hiring for all positions except the police department, public works and the building department, and I so move.
Is there a second?
I second that.
It's moved by Counselor McClary, seconded by Counselor Oliver, we will move into discussion portion of this. And Counselor McClary, if you have that written down, our clerk of counsel, I know she's gonna ask me if we could get that, uh, so she just has everything that we just discussed. Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor McClary, is that a legacy hand?
Nope, this is a, a hand. Uh, this is, uh, the budget guidelines is just guidelines, uh, it is just to give parameters to the town staff uh, and the Board of Education as they put their budgets together, uh, to, uh, submit uh, these, a budget that reflects the guidelines that the council, uh, has wished to see. Uh, they don't have to do it, it's just guidelines. Um, ultimately, uh, the final decision will lay, uh, in the hands of the, the town council. And so I would hope that the staff will send, um, or prepare a, a budget proposal that is close as possible uh, to our budget guidelines, but this is just to give some parameters to them operate as they put together budget. And so, uh, I fully support this and hope my colleagues can support it. Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Counselor Mahan.
Uh, just a quick question for the, uh, Chair of the Finance Committee. Uh, if I heard what you, uh, said correctly when you were bringing up the item, this, um, this budget guideline only included, um, clearance for what hires, the hires for what, uh, ex- exact departments, can you please repeat that?
Uh, the police department, public works and the building department.
Okay, does, I, I'm sure you guys considered this, but I just wanna know, what was the rationale behind, um, not giving any space for, uh, our library? Uh, for example, I, I know the library director has, uh, spoke many times about how the library is understaffed and how she needs more folks or other departments that have said that they're understaffed and need more help. What was kind of the rationale behind it, if I can, um, if you can help me understand it?
Counselor, Counselor Merritt.
I was gonna say that we aren't saying that, uh, that we have delayed the hiring of some people, former positions, sort of, for example, for the library. And we're not saying that those people shouldn't be hired, we're just saying that we know new people for next year. So it's a, it's not really keeping people from, uh, replacing, uh, positions that, uh, are traditional positions, so we're just talking about new, new positions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a clarifying question.
Uh, Counselor Mahan.
Thank you. Um, so, it, just so I can be clear on this, you're saying that, um, that, so the positions that are currently open, you're giving the space for those departments to hire for those positions that are currently vacant? Or, just so I can understand?
We're, we're asking, we'd like to cut out anything we can, obviously, because we need to. Uh, but, uh, generally speaking, for example, I'm saying we have some delayed positions for the library, I think they're the only ones that are left for this year. And we're going to, presumably those positions will be filled. Uh, and we're not stopping that, that's actually this current year, isn't next year. So we're talking about planning for next year.
Counselor McClary.
Uh, and to clarify, uh, to Joe Merritt, no new positions for next year, but for this year, uh, we also are extending the hiring uh, moratorium, the hiring freezes, basically the hiring freeze, um, until, uh, May of twenty twenty-four. Um, and we're allowing, uh, under this motion, allowing, uh, the public health and safety departments and quality of life departments to make, uh, their hires. We know that the police department has struggled with their police officers. Uh, we know that public works has also struggled and has, uh, had a need for significant amount of time, uh, with maintainers and a number of other, uh, positions that have been delayed. Uh, that directly affects the quality of life to our residents. Um, and the building department also, uh, directly impacts quality of life to our residents. And, um, also, um, is, uh, self-generated for revenue. And so, uh, it is my thought to put this motion forward, um, so that, um, we can, uh, save roughly as we saw um, in the Finance Committee, a significant amount of money, uh, given the uncertainty around, um, our budget projections. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Merritt.
I, I, I didn't understand, Ken. I, I don't remember in that meeting ever agreeing to extend the, uh, holdup on hiring, rehiring positions for the library. Are you saying those ones that were going to? Are you saying those ones that were going to go to the end of this year are now going to May? Are we voting on that today?
That's a part of my motion, uh Counselor Merritt.
I'm sorry, I just can't agree with that, and that was not part of what was decided at that meeting.
So may I ask a clarifying question?
So there is a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask the Clerk of Council to repeat the motion, so everyone is on the same page. And then we'll uh continue with discussion.
Interesting.
Okay, so the motion was, if I'm correct, um Ken.
Counselor McClary?
I'm sorry, Counselor McClary. Can you re- repeat it for me?
Uh to recommend that the Bloomfield Town Council establish budget guidelines for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five to include a half a percent increase for the BOE, the usage of one million dollars from our fund balance for the general fund appropriation, the allocation of five hundred K for capital improvements, and a reduction in town operations four and a half percent, and to continue the moratorium on hiring for all positions until May of uh twenty twenty-four, with the exceptions of the the Police Department, Public Works, and the Building Department.
I have a clarifying question, Madam Mayor.
So can Clerk of Council, who seconded the motion?
Uh Counsel Oliver.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. It was moved by Counselor McClary, uh seconded by Counselor Oliver. Counselor Mahan?
Thank you. Um so what positions was in, can you specifically state what positions are, will be included in this hiring moratorium that um will continue through May, apparently now? Uh be, and this is why I asked these clarifying questions, because as you can see, there, there are some counselors even on dice that didn't quite understand with the verbiage that we currently have in the agenda, the, the spec- the specifics of this item, um and our residents deserve to know that as well. So what specific positions are included in this hiring moratorium until May? And um uh another, another item kind of uh related to this, I understand you, you're saying that we're going to allow the hiring for uh different departments that um that are part of the quality of life uh for our residents, or or are directly related to the quality of life for our residents. But the argument can be made for uh these other departments as well, that they uh directly uh uh come into uh come into play with the quality of life of our different, of our many different residents. Um some people rely on the library for uh various resources, because our libraries aren't just places where you get books anymore. They're uh public resource centers these days. So what specific positions, I'll come back to my question, are included in this hiring moratorium uh that will continue until May?
Do you, Madam Mayor? Do you want me to take that, or do you wanna?
I think that's an appropriate, thank you, Mr. McClary, but that's an appropriate conversation, I mean, for the town manager. We're gonna just reset on decorum. We're gonna talk one at a time, and you will please wait till you are recognized. Uh I'm going to hand it over to our town manager, Mr. Phil Schenk.
Uh we have a number of vacant uh positions in a variety of areas. I'll try to go through some of these, and and we can uh either talk about them or or proceed. Uh we have a librarian three, we have library pages. Okay, we have library assistant, part-time, two positions. There are three-page positions that are vacant. A library one, then we can move on to some of the other uh departments. Okay, we have a la- library, this is still in the library, I guess, library technology technician, uh a human resource staff assistant, uh administrative analyst two in the building uh depart- division or department, part-time senior service cafe workers, we have three of them uh leaving. Uh part-time senior uh service, uh I'm having problems reading this, so yeah.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, you can go.
So I will continue to read it, so we're gonna have a little, we're gonna have decorum here, folks. We still aren't in an official meeting, and so I will ask the Clerk of Council, who normally takes over when we're having difficulty seeing the screen.
You want me to read it?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, so from the top, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, open positions, which was the budgeted six-month freeze positions of a library three. Um we have three part-time library pages, we have two part-time library assistants, and we have two part-time positions for a library one. I'm sorry, librarian one. Vacancies as of November of twenty twenty-three, which was last week, in our finance meeting, was discussed that we have a library technology technician, HR staff assistant, and administrative analyst two for the building division, a part-time senior services cafe, which is two. Um Public Works heavy equipment operator, Public Works maintainer two, senior services administrative aide two, entry-level police officers, which is three, a police sergeant, and a part-time youth and family worker.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Merritt?
I, if this were just guidelines for next year's budget, I would be very happy to approve it. But when you've added these freezes in, and which I guess did not come out of the finance meeting, it must have come out of a subsequent meeting with no minority representation. And I don't think that was quite proper, and I don't, I mean, we certainly didn't decide on that in the subcommittee meeting. So I highly disapprove, and I would ask you amend this to just make it uh uh addressing uh next year's budget, which would be a non-binding guidelines for the budget, rather than enforcing things for this year that were not discussed in the subcommittee and don't deserve. I mean, you're actually sticking it to the library, which seems very definitely. I understand there are people in Town Hall that have no use for the library. After the towns voted for all this money to build a new one, we aren't intending to staff even what we've got. They're already cutting out services. So I, I just don't think this is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would ask you to amend this to just include guidelines for next year.
It sounds like there's a friendly amendment on the floor, so if it is accepted by that initial mover and accepted by the seconder, we can move forward. I'll second Joe's amendment. Per rules and procedures, the one that initiated the motion on the floor has to accept, so Counselor McClary would have to accept, and it sounds like he's not. So thank you for those comments, Mr. um Counselor Merritt. Counselor Mahan?
Thank you, and uh Counselor Merritt, I I appreciate your remarks as the um minority party representation on the Finance Committee. I, I, I am having a a tough time kind of uh filling this, this item. Um in some of the remarks from the Chair of the uh Finance Subcommittee, I, I, if you know, I'm correct, I'm hearing that there's also going to be an additional, the guidance includes an additional four and a half percent reduction to the town operations budget. Did I, did I hear that correctly? Or, and if I did not, what is the percent? And I, I understand that, but I just wanna be clear on the guideline that I I'm voting on. Um what is the percent reduction uh that is being proposed in the guideline for our upcoming budget, for, for the town operating budget?
Can you please repeat the motion that's on the floor? Thank you, Clerk of Council.
The current motion?
I believe so. That includes the question that he's asking.
Okay, so the current motion is um the friendly amendment was not accepted, and there was no new motion that was made after that.
Thank you. So I believe the reduction in the guidelines is a four point five percent. Thank you.
So, and that's on top of the four and a half percent that we already reduced in our previous budget for the town operating budget?
I can't answer that question. I just know the motion on the floor is a reduction in guideline to staff to build a budget that reflects the guidelines that uh the four point five percent reduction to town ops.
Okay, even, well, I'll just state it then. I'll make it a statement. Uh we reduced the town operating budget by four and a half percent last year. And so what it sounds like is that there's a guidance here um to reduce that town operating budget by an additional four and a half percent. I'm looking at some of these positions, and I mean, they may not be in uh the Police Department or Public Works, but you have positions like even this part-time senior service, senior services cafe uh worker who may not seem like, it may not seem like a, a big position or a vital position, but that's, you know, there are folks that are depending on that scene, that part-time senior services employee to uh provide an essential service, uh especially for our uh residents that are more advanced in age um in our community. So I, I simply, I, I can't support this item, because uh this is just a, another step of what I feel like is irresponsible uh for, for us to approve something like this, a guideline that'll just reduce more uh benefits to our residents. I simply can't uh support this item.
Counselor McClary?
Uh thank you, uh Madam Mayor. I uh just wanna uh clarify and just make sure I'm very clear and level set with the public. Um at the September uh Finance Committee meeting, the Finance Committee received three uh different forecasts. And those forecasts show uh with a grand list growing at three point four four percent, a tax increase at a minimum of five and a quarter, up to seven and a half percent on our tax, on our taxpayers. Right now, I do understand that the tax assessor is in the process of doing the real estate and putting the uh applications for real estate and what the grand list is gonna be for real estate. Uh we already received uh the number as it relates to uh personal property, and we have not received motor vehicle. If the grand list does not come in at three point four four percent, we are pro- most likely probably are going to be facing a tax, or the residents of Bloomfield are gonna be are gonna be facing a significant tax increase, even potentially greater than we did last year. And so these guidelines is to try to level set and minimize those uh those projections, right? Projection changes every single day, um right? And so um this is an attempt uh to have some organic budget savings. Um we attempted to, uh a number of the Democratic uh folks of the caucus and uh the minority ca- uh party attempted to ask the, the town manager to use discretion on as it relates to um hiring um until we can get clearer pictures. Um and I don't necessarily uh see that happening, and so this is an attempt to organically try to get some budget savings so that when we get to budget season, um we're not faced with a significant tax increase. And so I would hope my colleagues would support this, this motion. I know it's very uncomfortable um as the projections, and as we get into further the first quarter of the, the new year and the second quarter of the new year, um and we start to look and it gets a little bit clearer, we can start as a body to relax some of these things. But what I don't wanna do is for us to get to budget season, and we don't do the things that we need to do right now to try to save some dollars so that we can have it on the back end to minimize the cuts, or you're gonna be facing some significant um challenges during budget season. And so I would hope that uh my colleagues support this motion, because I think it's in the best interest of our our taxpayers. We heard, I know a number of us heard about a number of issues uh that uh residents uh care about, and one of those things is their ability to pay their property taxes. And so this is a, this is an attempt uh to make sure that we have resources and budget savings so that we um don't find ourselves taxing our residents over uh significantly in the next budget year. So uh thank you, Madam Mayor, and I hope my colleagues could support this motion.
I'm gonna recognize uh Counselor Lloyd and then uh Counselor Cooper.
Okay, I just wanna say thank you to Counselor McClary for making very um clear that this is not set in stone. These moratoriums are recommended, as well as the the four and a half percent, for example, for the departments to use as a guideline, for us to try to meet our goals, to be responsible stewards over the funds that we do have, and even the ones that we don't have as we go into this next budget season. So um for example, with the library staff, while I understand the need for the staff, I'm, I'm trying to understand the need for that amount of staff while we are in a swing space with reduced services. I do know that they are extending services going out into the schools and different measures such as that while they're in the swing space so that they can still have a sense of some robust um offerings for the community, for example. But as Counselor McClary just said, as we get a better handle on the funds and the finances that'll be coming in, which is why some of the tough questions coming from uh the Finance Committee to staff, such as what are our projections looking like? Um asking the assessor to extend information that um maybe hadn't been asked before so that we can make better decisions as we go into budget season, instead of going in with a bunch of question marks. So I don't, I don't see that some of these things can't possibly change as we better understand our financial position, but to go in conservatively um on the front end, as people keep saying, um I think is a wise thing to do. And as you find yourself with more financial latitude, you can make the adjustments later. But uh to be extreme, I'll give an example as a state employee. I hate for people to get hired now and fired later. I say that to say, being uh an extreme comment, that I would rather be responsible now than to have people hired than turn around online and and look at a layoff or pink slip. And I'm not saying at all that something like that is gonna happen, but I do like to think worst-case scenario, and also go into things like this with a conservative approach, and that gives you latitude for adjustment later. So I, 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 I want the public, as well as our very valued staff, to understand these things as well. That we're trying to be conservative. We don't want to diminish their services or uh extremely overwhelm them during their workday. Um but we also have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers who reside here. It's a very difficult position to be put in, so I, I appreciate everyone's consideration and comments tonight to give us a full perspective of different um viewpoints on this. Thank you.
Counselor Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh you know, I want to first of all, thank um uh Counselor Merritt and uh Counselor Mahan for, you know, your concern. I'm also an advocate uh for the library. Um and, and what I hear, what my colleagues are saying, uh Counselor McClary and Counselor uh Lloyd, uh in that, you know, we don't know uh what the uh fiscal outlook is going to be. And as I understand, I, I'm new to this, but I, as I understand that, you know, we haven't uh received a clear picture of what the town's funding is or will be. And, you know, I would rather err on the side of caution when looking at what, you know, finances may be. Um everything is not always gonna be rosy. Uh everything is not always going to be uh, uh, you know, a a bad situation, but certainly uh until um, you know, we as a body are, are able to get a a, a, a better grasp on, on what we have incoming. It's like uh your, your own home budget. If you don't know, you don't go out and buy something. Uh to Counselor uh Lloyd's point, you don't want folks being hired and then uh not serving them well later down the road, and certainly uh by um by extension, you don't serve the citizens of the town well. Um and you, you know, it, which also addresses uh Counselor Merritt, um your concern about the freeze of those positions. Uh and I know that's a big ouch, you know, to those who, who advocate for the library, um me being one of them. You know, and I'll be uh upfront and honest about that, me being one of them. However, um in doing so, I think that we do know that those library positions are not going away. They're not cut. They are going to be uh funded for, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor McClary. Or they are already funded for in the budget, they're just on hold. And so, you know, it's, it is not like we have removed those positions. And, and, you know, we, uh in all earnestness, you don't have to wait and see. It's not a, a comfortable place to be. Um and it's disappointing to some, but it is uh necessary nonetheless. And I think that as a body, we owe it to the town, uh residents of the town of Bloomfield uh to hold off until we get clarity uh surrounding it. This is no different than, than any other um uh body that has a fiscal or fiduciary responsibility. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Merritt?
I appreciate your position, and I wholly endorse the idea of the town manager saying these are some positions we don't need to fill right away. But I'm talking about things for this year, and I, this is, these have been held up, and I actually know that we are not we are not allowing the library to provide the services they've been providing. They're actually having They're actually having to cut back right now on services because we, they just don't have the money. They have lost more people. I mean, it doesn't make sense. Makes more sense. Let's hold up building a new library. I mean, if you're not going to have the people to do the job, why are we spending $30 million on a new library? If we aren't going to manage, that, that's going to require more people. So let's hold that up if you're, if we're that desperate. As you, as you all know, I don't agree with this pessimism about our budget. I don't, I've been through this a number of times. We just discovered we had $3 million we didn't think we had a few months ago. $3 million. That's a lot of money. That's 3% of our budget. And when they completed the audit for last year, we really have a lot of fog concerning our finances. But, and then I'm looking at our progress so far this year and we are underspending every month from what we expected to spend. So it, it, I just don't see that we're in that much trouble. And I, it's gloom and doom mentality is, I think, totally ridiculous. So I, I, I just don't think we should be cutting back on our quality services at this time and picking particularly on one branch, the library. Don't seem to be willing to cut anything else out. So I, I'm, I'm just, I think this is a bad idea.
Counselor Mahan and then Counselor Lloyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I want to do is move to have this item sent back to the Finance Committee with some of the comments that have been heard on the dais and hope for a new budget guideline that'll include some of that commentary. Especially taking into account that it seems like Counselor Merritt wasn't even aware of the hiring moratorium continuing until May, that that was going to be in this item. And then also hearing from some, some of the comments from my colleagues that, there's a few of my colleagues that also don't know the specifics that are in this very item. So I, I would, I want to move for this to go back to the Finance Committee, have it rehashed and brought back to this.
I would, I would second that. And I would also, may I make a comment?
The comments are out of order. There is an active motion on the floor and
It was a friendly amendment, ma'am.
Is, it looks like the friendly amendment wasn't accepted by the initiator of the motion, which is Counselor McCleary and the second or Counselor Oliver. Am I incorrect or correct? Okay. And so we're going to move forward this motion at this time. Thank you so much for the discussion. Counselor Lloyd, apologies.
I was going to ask to call the question.
Question has been called by Counselor Lloyd. Before she does that, I am going to just say a comment before I do a roll call vote. Last budget season was tough. It was very, very tough. We raised taxes 6.5% on our homeowners and we reduced and didn't invest in any infrastructure. These guidelines invest in infrastructure. They are guidelines. They are subject to change as much as they need to change. If we need to call a special meeting because the town manager is in dire need and urgency of hiring, we will do that. We have those tools that we can leverage and utilize. We are a flexible counsel, counsel who is ready and willing to do the best that we can. But I do agree, we need to be extremely fiscal conservative, fiscally conservative, excuse me, until we get that solid number from our grand list, until we get the solid numbers from our finance department, who is working diligently around the clock to conclude and complete very much important deliverables for this town. And so as they have stated time and time again, those numbers are fluid. And until those numbers firm up, it is upon us to protect the taxpayer dollars as to the best of our ability. And we absolutely send the signal of importance to all of our staff departments. And these are tough decisions. And I don't think anyone wants to make these decisions, but we have to make them these decisions because this is what we were voted to do, to do the work. And this is what we are doing today. And so with that, I'm going to call the question and do a roll call vote. Counselor McCleary?
Yes.
Counselor Lloyd?
Yes.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Waterhouse? Counselor Merritt? Counselor Mahan?
No.
Deputy Mayor? The mayor votes yes. The motion carries. Thank you so much for that discussion from all my colleagues. That was very much needed. Moving into our report from the mayor and the town manager, Mr. Town Manager? Oh, apologies. Apologies. We added an item. I am getting ahead of myself. The next item is the Consider and Take Possible Action Regarding the Housing Rehabilitation Program regarding some of our capital investment fund applications that have been addressed in the past. I will recognize the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would it be appropriate to submit the resolution or we open for discussion? I can provide some information about.
Yeah, let's give a little background to why this item is being added today and then we'll move into the formalities.
So we presented this proposal to CIF on two previous occasions. It was not approved during that time. Since that time, we have learned exactly what elements of the proposal that needed to be modified. And we are fairly certain that with the addition of these changes, we will see a positive outcome in terms of the submission. One of the issues is the lending institution. And we have our consultants, Gorman New York, online to possibly provide some additional information as we proceed. But it was for $2 million. We're, we're raising it to 3.5. It was going to cover possibly 60 homes in the town. It is now potentially to cover 100. The credit rating was being lowered from 580 to a lower number. The fees associated with late payments was being waived. There's just a number of areas that are being addressed to help CIF understand that we are looking to assist the whole community. It's primarily the Blue Hills area as well as the downtown area. And we just feel that with 15, with, with December 15th being the timeframe that this is due to be submitted, that we could encourage our consultant and staff to, to address those concerns that have been identified by CIF. And we believe that we could have a very robust proposal to submit.
And thank you, Deputy Mayor, for bringing this and pioneering this along with Counselor McCleary, who I will now recognize too, I believe adds some, some more meat to that explanation.
Yes, I, I want to thank the deputy mayor for his leadership and his partnership in this initiative. You know, we have been working on this for a very, very, very long time. It is very dear near to a number of people in the community that I spoke to. The importance of this, this, this program also allows that the deputy mayor didn't mention a tax abatement. So not only are we going to allow you to have this, these rep, this funds to make structural and significant improvements to your residential property. But in doing so, we're going to reward you with the tax abatement. And that's very significant. The, the, the monthly payment is very minimum. Towards a portion of the program, it is forgiven if certain things are met. And so, as the deputy mayor said, we met with the community investment of folks board, their staff. They gave us an executive summary around some of the things that will help enhance our chances. I know our state delegation is very excited about this program and has been kind of pushing the, the cart to, for us to submit this and continue to move forward. And so I'm so happy that we have the support of members of our state delegation for this. And I would hope that my colleagues will support this because this is what the residents of Bloomfield need. And it will have a significant impact in their day-to-day lives. So I fully support this and hope that we can adopt this tonight so that staff in Gorman New York can move forward, submission of this, this application before the December 15th deadline. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. And so now I would ask that the deputy mayor read his motion. Thank you.
Resolution for Bloomfield Housing Rehabilitation Program. Whereas pursuant to Section 32-285A, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Bloomfield make an application to the state for $3.5 million in order to undertake, undertake the Bloomfield Housing Rehabilitation Program and to execute an assistance agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Bloomfield Town Council, one, the town council is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Section 32-285A. Two, the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the town of Bloomfield in the amount not to exceed $3,500,000 is hereby approved. Philip K. Schnick Jr., sorry, I know I probably pronounced it incorrectly. Interim Town Manager is directed to execute and file such application with the appropriate state authorities to secure an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered. The interim town manager is also authorized to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions to the agreement and act as the authorized representative of the town of Bloomfield.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor McCleary and Counselor Waterhouse. Any further discussion on this matter? Counselor Cooper, is that a hand?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, you know, have heard about this program and I certainly believe that it will help improve not only the, the, the lives of the folks here in this town, but also in that Blue Hills corridor. The, the optics of, you know, improved living conditions for the people in the town of Bloomfield is a great look. And I want to thank our deputy mayor, certainly for his hard work and Counselor McCleary for his work, you know, in that direction to, to get this program off the ground. I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for the town of Bloomfield. And I look forward to seeing it come to fruition.
Counselor McCleary, is that a legacy hand, sir?
Well, I want to just provide more. And in the Finance Committee, we've also been talking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and working with Gorman New York to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the town of Bloomfield. And so if we are granted these, these dollars, we are currently in the Finance Committee working on that Affordable Housing, Affordable Housing Trust Fund for Bloomfield and coming up with language. And so it's, we wasn't able to have a robust discussion because the Don Pollan, Professor Pollan was out sick. And so a part of that is to include these funds in that Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that it could be more robust and help with affordable housing and reach and a number of other initiatives for the residents of Bloomfield. And so this is just the first step of a larger initiative as it relates to housing. And I hope, again, my colleagues can support. Thank you.
Counselor Oliver?
I too would like to support this. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor Anthony Harrington and Councilman McCleary. I think this is a great thing for the community. Not only, not only does it help people in the community that can't afford it, it gives them time to pay it and it also will, you know, increase the rest of the house values in the rest of the town. We don't want to end up with a dilapidated community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The most, the mayor votes aye. The motion carries. Thank you so very much. Now, moving into the reports from the town manager and mayor, Mr. Phil Schenk.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items. I think this Saturday is a real opportunity to participate in a community event here at the town hall, primarily in the parking lot adjacent to the town hall. We're going to have the annual tree lighting and parade. So we would like to make sure that everybody is aware of that and hopefully you can attend. The Mountain Avenue sidewalk, many of you that travel Mountain Avenue and even some of you on Gab Road who are part of the detour off of Mountain Avenue. The sidewalk is well under construction. We anticipate if the weather holds out that the concrete work will be done in a couple of weeks. The restoration work of lawns and adjacent properties will probably have to wait until next spring. Also under construction is Philly Park, the bond issue that was approved back in 2021. We're finally seeing, seeing some of the results of that. That project includes a pavilion, a new bridge, the northern parking lot rehabilitation, and some other sidewalk and other improvements. And that's well underway. It's supposed to be completed by August of 2024. And I'm not going to steal the mayor's thunder here, but we did have a trail dedication program and I'll complete my report and allow the mayor to make hers.
Great segue. Thank you so much, Mr. Town Manager. So we did have a trail dedication, a ribbon cutting that connects Simsbury and Bloomfield, a historic event with, that includes the bigger, broader initiative with the East Coast Greenway, which I believe starts from Maine. And the goal is to get it from Maine to Florida. And Bloomfield is a significant part of that. This has been championed and driven by Counselor Joe Merritt for many, many years of his service. He continues to chair, chair the Trails Committee today. And I'm excited to continue to advocate to bring this trail. And so we thank the Simsbury selectmen for their support and their partnership and our town engineer, Jonathan Thiesi, and our town staff for continuing to build out the priorities of the town council. So very, very excited. Some, some other updates. We did get our, and I know we didn't have committee reports today because we will be announcing subcommittee appointments in our next meeting in December. But we did complete the 2023 audit. So I want to thank the Chair of the Finance Committee for being diligent and sticking to those items, making it a priority in the subcommittee. 2022, excuse me, he's saying 2022, fiscal year 2022. We have another audit that we need to be diligent on and to cat, you know, get back up to speed. So thank you to the finance department and the finance committee for, you know, having those hard discussions and continuing to do the work on that. In regards to our executive search for our town manager, we meet frequently, the search committee, we will meet this week with our consultant to kind of garner next steps, identify the next pool of candidates and hopefully determine if we're going to kick up a round of candidates to the full body, depending on what our consultant advises at that point. And so we are very excited to continue the search. It continues to be a major priority of this town because we do know that Mr. Phil Schenk is, his contract ends at the end of this year. And so we will also be discussing transition, executive transition options as we move into the new year. So I wanted to just make sure that the community knows how important these priorities are. The town council is talking about this actively with each other. And that, I believe, is all I have to add from our reports. We're going to move right into our approval of minutes. We have a significant amount of minutes, including two special meetings that occurred this year. And this is something just for my colleagues to note, what that is applicable to go on what is called a consent agenda that was recently approved in our procedures and rules earlier this meeting. Those procedures and rules are active as of that consensus. And so because, just a little note here, we're going to have to approve every date of minutes. We can't just do it in a lump sum. And so just please bear with me. And so is there a motion to approve the October 10th, 2023 minutes? Moved by Counselor Merritt, seconded by Counselor Mahan. Any discussion? Any amendments, objections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Is there an approval to move to October, approve the October 25, 2023 special meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Waterhouse, seconded by Counselor Mahan or Merritt? Any amendments, discussion, updates to those minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the November, excuse me, the mayor votes aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the November 1st, 2023 special meeting minutes? Moved by Counselor Waterhouse, seconded by Counselor McCleary. Any amendments, discussions? Moved by Council Waterhouse, seconded by Council McClary. Any amendments, discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Mayor votes aye, the motion passes. And a motion to approve the November 13th, 2023 minutes?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Council Mahan, seconded by Council Merritt. Any discussion amendments to those minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, any opposed? The mayor votes aye, the motion passes. We are moving into council comments. Please keep in mind the new two-minute rule. Council Waterhouse.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for coming out today. I look forward to seeing how we can make the affordable housing blossom in our town. I think that's really exciting. And I also look forward to December 2nd, to our tree lighting. It should be beautiful and a lot of fun. My children love going. But I want to give a special thank you to Phil. You are crucial to us and thank you for coming back and forth and back and forth several times. Thank you so much.
Counselor Merritt?
Thank you. It keeps us to one minute. I have to piggyback on the bike path comments because this is very important to me and as people know, it has been for some time. I go back something like 15 years and I'm trying to get this section done, even the bike path. I remember walking along it with somebody from Hartford back 15 or 20 years ago. And it takes a long time to get these things done. You have to keep after them. But this is very important because it does give us a bike path going somewhere. It didn't used to go. It was a bike path to nowhere. And now it goes somewhere and it's a really good thing because once you get to Terrifford, you can, there's some bikable roads there, say nothing. But more important to me is that they've already picked a route across Simsbury to connect to Canal Trail. So that's on its way. That's going to happen. And I was very impressed with Crog, who's providing guidance on this, how they handled the, in front of the Selectmen, how they handled selling it. And they did a great job. I'm looking forward to their dealing with Bloomfield, which they're now doing. So we're going to find some pathways through Bloomfield, which they're already working on and looking at. And I'm very optimistic that that will be as successful as it were at Simsbury. So, and this is, we've been trying to get this for a long time. It may be that people want bike paths like we're talking about going to library to library to Blue Hills. It doesn't have to be part of the East Coast Greenway. We're going to do that anyway. And there's funding, all the funding for this is coming from grants. And there's all sorts of money available for these things. So it's not going to come out of our taxpayers' hide. So I would, I would hope we all look forward to this. And we're especially looking at the railroad tracks, the pathway into Hartford as a potential way, but we can't count on it because there's still tracks there and we don't know that we'll be allowed to use it. But it would make a great, a great way to go. It's still the preferred track for the bike path. So, thank you. I, that's enough.
Yeah, that was, we're going to, we'll work on that. We'll work on that. Counselor Mahan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank, you know, my neighbors that came out today. I met some neighbors today as I was walking and our new neighbors that have only been here for a couple of years. Thank you very much for coming on out as one, making your voices heard. I always love hearing engagement from those that are in our community. I also want to thank my colleagues for robust conversation on the various items. I do believe, you know, 15 slash 16 dash 84, which is a change to rules of procedure, was a misstep by the council. But, you know, the burden of proof is going to be on those that have proposed and voted for this measure. Someone said during the meeting that less meetings will allow us to complete the work outside of council chambers. But, you know, that's the exact problem that I'm finding with this measure. If we're doing all that work outside of council chambers, you know, the whole reason why we have council meetings is to make sure that our decisions and our discussions are on the record. If we have them outside of council chambers, it's less transparency, less accountability, which is what this measure does. On a brighter note, this Saturday, as our Town Manager did say, we are having our tree lighting ceremony and parade. I am gladly, my family business, Mike and Tony Auto Sales, will be gladly participating in the parade this year. Actually, we're bringing out our tow truck. We're going to be decorating it and participating. So I'm happy to be an active participant in this parade, not just a viewer as I have been for the last two years. But it's something that I always look forward to, something that my family always enjoys. And I'm glad that another part of my family can get plugged into a community event. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank all the residents for coming out and giving their concerns to the town. I'm very excited about Rockwell. I grew up in this town, 44 years, my entire life. And besides the basketball courts being painted a few years ago, I don't recall that park being updated at all. You know, we all grew up, everybody that lived in Bloomfield, you know, I played for Bloomfield Electric, I think the company was called, from my jersey on my shirt. But I definitely look forward to this Saturday and I can't wait to see the improvements to Rockwell Park. That's a major thing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be short. I just wanted to thank, as everyone said, I want to thank our neighbors for coming out. I really do. Thank you for introducing yourself. Hope to see you again, you know, at some point in time, maybe Saturday. And also to my neighbors, Gab Road and Maple, correct? And thank you so much for coming out and, you know, voicing your concerns. It's always wonderful. This is your government in action. And that's, that's pretty much it. And I am glad to be of service to you. And if there's anything, I'm sure that, not even myself, but I will lay that at the feet of our, it's not my time yet. I will lay that at the feet of our mayor and our deputy mayor. And I'm only joking, but very serious business. You know, people's lives are certainly counting on us to do a great job. And so I don't take that part lightly, but I also wouldn't say that it just does my heart well to see folks come out and take part in the democratic functions of their town, their local level. This is where it all starts. This is where it all starts. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lloyd?
I want to sentiment, I want to echo the sentiments of my former counselor, sitting on the dais. I would be next to him, I think, from what I see. Counselor Cooper, not only thanking the residents for all coming out and lending your thoughts because they add value, but thank you to everyone on the dais for adding your diversity of thought. If we all thought the same way, we would have no progress. So it's really important for us to share our different perspectives and ask questions so that we can come to proper conclusions that we feel collectively will benefit the services. Also, Saturday, I'm really excited. I have my hand warmers. We're ready. Thanks in advance to Leisure Services and all the departments and outside entities that'll be participating. I think it's going to be a great night. And as well, thanking in advance the town departments as they work towards trying to put some parameters and framework around their budget. It's not easy. Thank you to the Finance Department for already starting to plug away and putting some framework around getting that audit done. That's much appreciated because those are the numbers where we get a full picture. The, to Counselor Merritt's comment, we had a little late audit. So thanking in advance those departments who are working so hard on getting that information on how we move forward financially for our town and for all of our residents as well as our employees and everyone that enters this town in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McClary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for being here tonight and thank the residents of Maple Avenue for coming out to speak about traffic comment. I remember visiting September of last year at the home of Peter and Lori Julian to have a conversation about traffic comment and to hear the issues and the voices of the residents. And Lori texts me every other day about some new state laws or new things and ideas. And I'm sure Counsel Lloyd, as the Chair of Public Safety, also received emails and texts from Lori and the group in Maple Avenue, keep advocating because democracy and things don't happen without your voice in the process. And so I thank you for coming out. I look forward to the tree lighting on December 2nd. I too will be marching in the parade like I do every year with the soccer club. My daughter plays soccer and she marches every year in the parade. And I march along the parade route and give out candy canes. And so I look forward to doing that this Saturday. Also, on December 9th, the WNBA Connecticut Sun will be in town for a basketball clinic for our young ladies. There are two sessions. One is at 11:00 AM to 12:15. The second session is 12:30 to 1:45 and that's at 330 Park Avenue. The gym there will have a special guest by WNBA superstar Ty Harris and former UConn great Morgan Tuck. Please register, young ladies. It is a free event. At registration, you'll get a free t-shirt from the Connecticut Sun. You'll get a free WNBA basketball and a backpack with a bunch of information. We look forward to young people getting off the tech, off the computers and the iPads and the cell phones and getting back active. I want to thank Dave Molesto and his group, Black Girl Achieve, and the Greater Hartford Youth Pro-Am. And also Creative Art Learning Academy, who are assisting and sponsoring this event for our young people along with the Connecticut Sun. Finally, I want to wish and thank everybody for participating in this upcoming holiday. Happy Thanksgiving and thanks to all of our community partners who filled in the gap to help our neighbors. Thank you and I hope that was two minutes.
Great job, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I knew two minutes would be a problem. So I, I just want to thank our residents for coming out to share this experience with us. This is our first formalized meeting and I think it went well. I am so happy for the approval of the Rockwell project as well as our housing rehab program. I just want to say, it's going to be tough. You know, we don't throw out proposals and it just gets done. There's a lot of work that has to take place before it's even let loose from, from the Town Manager's office. So I want to thank Gorman New York and Justin and others that will be really putting the work to make this project work this time because we really feel that we have an opportunity to do something special in Bloomfield along with the development of TIFF in the Blue Hills area and downtown and Granby Street. There is one other note. This past week, I attended, what was it called? An awards and promotion ceremony at the Bloomfield Police Department. And I sat with my colleague, Counselor Cindy Lloyd. And I failed to mention that she was the first woman of color police officer in the town of Bloomfield. And I lost my opportunity. I said I wasn't going to lose it again. Detective, excuse me, I have been fully noted. So, so I wanted to take that opportunity because that is something very, very special. And she is still here, serving our community. And I'd like to thank all of my council members. Oh, my God. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, thank you so much for coming out. I too have coyotes in my backyard. They are a pack. They have been thriving since the pandemic, like others have, especially our bears. And so I'll look to see what the solution is because I'm not sure what that is and we'll get you some information. So please just don't forget to leave your information with us so we can continue to communicate with you on that. Like my colleagues here, I am super excited about Rockwell. It has been a long time coming. So thank you so much. And with the traffic calming, the traffic calming has been such an issue, not just in Bloomfield, but across the state of Connecticut. And he's just here today, former Counselor Kevin Goff. But this was his introduction, him and the former Deputy Mayor David Mann. They introduced this in 2020, 2021, 2020, 2020, my first term on council. And they, you know, presented a process because they saw a problem. And so all the speed humps or speed bumps or humps and bumps are because of, you know, an idea that was cultivated within this group, you know, whether it be at a coffee table, whether it be in a committee meeting or whether it be on the street with talking to our neighbors, doing the work in and outside of chambers. And so we will continue to do that. And I want to thank our Town Manager, Mr. Phil Schenk, for bearing with us and, you know, getting behind our ideas and, you know, just challenging us to do better in every step of the process. Thank you for your service here. And with that, I will call a motion to adjourn. Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilman McClary. Have a wonderful.